First of all, I would like to apologize. We're just running a few minutes behind, but trust me, we're gonna move as effective and as efficiently as we can through this agenda. At this time, I would like to thank our visitors for coming and would like to call the meeting to order at 6:41. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, the Chair is seeking the adoption of the agenda as printed.
Madam President, I move that the adoption of the agenda is printed at 6.1.
Hold on.
There's an amendment that we need. I need you to take that back. We need to amend the agenda, Director Brooks.
Madam President, I make a motion that can delete or retain which one was item 11.1?
Yeah.
How is that moved?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to delete item 11.1. At this time, Vice President Reagan.
Yes, ma'am.
We're voting to approve the agenda with the amendment. Vice President Reagan?
I'm gonna sustain because I didn't know.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves. Oh, Donna, you call him, I remember. Director Graves. Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, one sustain. At this time, we're moving on to applause, applause. Good evening. Okay. For applause, applause this evening, we are recognizing two Millennium 5th graders as our students of the month. They are Anthony Sidillo and Maureen Khan. They are both described as excellent leaders with exceptional attendance and are always happy to lend a hand to their classmates. These two model students have been inducted into the Millennium National Elementary Honor Society, and we are recognizing you both and thanking you for being role models in your school, and we look forward to hearing more about your continued success. And at this time, I would ask Dr. Cargile and President Briggs, as well as their proud principal, Dr. Murkerson, to come forward.
It's great to know that we need Mr. Beck.
It's always great to get exciting news like that, to hear it. All right. At this time, we are moving on to audience comments. I don't have any. All right. Moving on to the approval of items, the draft levy hearing meetings from September the 24th. Board of Education, have you had a chance to read the minutes from September 24th? At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to adopt the September 24th tax levy hearing meeting minutes.
President Briggs, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes as the approval of the minutes 6.0.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, Ms. Peyton. Director Carter.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Reagan.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item 6.2. Board of Education, have you had a chance to read the September 2000, September 24th, 2019 minutes?
President Briggs, I move that we approve the minutes of the September 24th meeting.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, Ms. Peyton. Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero. All right. Moving on to principal executive summaries. Dr. Cargile?
Yes. So we have the pleasure of having our building leaders present today. We're gonna start first with Rita Markley. Dr. Osborne, you're first on the list. And so just a review for our newest board members and members of the audience. Each year, at the start of the year, each of our building leaders presents their building level data to the board and community in terms of beginning of the year data and speaks about the goals for the building, community engagement and involvement, and how students are performing at the building level. And so you get to hear directly from each one of those building leaders. And so we do that, this is now the second year for those presentations. Tonight, we'll hear from four different leaders. We'll hear from Dr. Osborne, Ms. Herrera, as well as Ms. Edwards, and lastly, Ms. Moore. And so first on the list tonight is Dr. Osborne. Help me welcome Dr. Osborne, principal at Rita Markley.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Sherri Osborne, so as she sounds, the principal of Rita Markley Early Childhood Center. I have students ages three to five. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you our building data, things that we have upcoming. I would like to take the opportunity to thank President Briggs, Vice President Reagan, Director Carter, Director Watry, and Director Graves, whose schedules have come in and have visited the school over the past, this year and last year. And I want to recognize you guys. I appreciate the pop-ins or the scheduled visits, all it's all great. At this time, I'm gonna begin with our school demographic data. We currently, well, actually, at the time I submitted, we had 236. I looked right before I walked out of the building, and we have 248 students. So we had an increase. Ninety percent of our students are students of color, and 100% are receive free lunch. Our attendance is currently at 73.1%. We do have a attendance goal of 80% that we are working to achieve, for students to be at school 90% of the time. We're excited to announce that we have a staff attendance committee to review our data, work closely with our new partners from Attendance Works at All Here. We've identified 27 students and their parents that we are going to work with to see if we can create family plans to support them. They're in the moderately absent category, and we want to see if we can move them forward. We also have several parents that showed interest in working in conjunction with our staff on this, so we are excited about that. Under data, begin with STAR early literacy. Within that form, data findings, pre-K takes STAR early literacy, and January for our winter cycle, and May for the spring cycle. The first chart demonstrates a two-year data and shows winter to spring in 2018, and then winter to spring in 2019. This data shows a positive trend moving.
The reading progressions. So there's four reading progressions, and we are able to move them from the least developed, which is the emergent reader, clear to the highest, which is probable. These categories will span pre-K, 2nd grade. The positive trend in winter to spring, from winter to spring is due to our exposure to letters, numbers throughout the school year, students' natural development, and direct instruction by teachers. The second chart demonstrates a four-year longitudinal trend. There is a decrease in the top two categories in 2000, the last year from the three previous years, but we see an increase in late emergent, which is where most of our pre-K students should fall. Our initial classroom data that we have been gathering in the beginning of the year shows that students have come in higher this year, so we are looking forward to filling gaps and expanding on their strengths. We are currently on track in the discipline data. To continue, a few referrals this year. Since I submitted this data, we've actually had two discipline referrals. So we are at a total of two, where last year we finished at five. But we are working with the information that we learned from Trauma Smart last year and developing relationships early with parents so that we can create plans and help students with strategies so that they can learn to be self-regulating young people. Our racial equity. The racial equity team and the care team, both are returning with the same members. We are hoping, well, we know that this is gonna help continue our growth this year. We have goals to be set so we'll be able to continue to address building needs. This year, the team's first task was to debrief staff on two of the focus questions developed by the district equity leadership team and myself on our equity walkthrough so that we can design a plan and answer the questions to determine what events we will provide to show that we've made improvement. The care team will expand to coach another staff member and how to identify their focal students and implement two care cycles throughout the school year. This will be accompanied by peer observation and feedback. In the principal's student advisory committee, I will be expanding on the questions from teacher rounding with students. We develop questions, what do you like about school? Who cares about you in our school? What do they do to show you they care? Is there anything in school that makes you mad or sad? And what sounds like fun to learn about in class? So our pre-K students can expand on those questions for us. Parent involvement. We have many parent involvement activities that are scheduled throughout the school year. Currently, I'll just talk to the three that have already taken place this fall. Two of the three events so far have shown an increase in participation. We have found that we need to change our name. Of the events is something that sounds more fun than versus just academic. We're changing some of the names from, to be more inclusive also. Pastries for parents, donuts with beer ones. That way, we can include more adults to come in and join our students. We will also be changing, like literacy night, it will become the Fall Carnival with literacy focus. We will also be providing some opportunities for food there, so we're hoping that we will bring in families so that we can have fun events to add to literacy, math, and steam. This year, in the focus goals, three of them are based on academics, and one will continue to focus on our parent involvement. We will analyze teaching practices and learning outcomes to increase achievement data. We will increase the number of students meeting or exceeding the pre-K bands on our 14 priority standards. We will incorporate culturally responsive teaching strategies to share documents and expand care cycles to all rooms. And finally, we'll analyze classroom data to review, revise, small group, and individualize instruction. This concludes my presentation. I would love to answer any questions that you have for me. Thank you. Just keep up the good work. Thank you, Dr. Mark.
And I can help these people. You do a great job for the next principal of the board.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Next, we'll have Ms. Herrera. Principal at Truman Elementary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am the principal at Truman Elementary, and I am here to share our executive summary. I have the 2019-20 demographics to share with you. We currently have 321 students enrolled. Ninety percent of our students are of color, and our attendance right now is at 91%, which exceeds our goal of 85% and is 15 percentage points higher than this time last year. And we're getting ready for our celebration assembly, and we.
Did note that we have 115 students who have not missed one day first quarter. As I move to our map data under summative data, when we look at our ELA statistics, it shows that from the 2018 to 2019 school year, there's not much of a difference. Scores continue to be below the district average with our proficient and advanced totals being at 14.7%. In math, our proficient and advanced totals show a slight decrease from 15.2 to 12.8, and the percentage of students scoring below basic did decrease from 62 to 60, and our science scores are not available. I apologize for not scrolling. We turn our attention to data that we have collected this school year. We look at our I-Ready data, and the I-Ready data, it falls into three categories. The red category is two years below grade level, yellow is one year below, and green is on grade level. And so the, what I'm sharing with you are those students that are in the green. So for reading, we have 14% of our students in the green, and in math, we have 10%. Our highest grade level in reading is 29% with third grade, and 17% in math at fifth grade. Our goal for winter is to have all of our students on grade level at 25%, and then by the end of the school year to exceed that. At the top of the second page, we're gonna look at some other important data, and we'll start with discipline referrals by month. The three-year trend in discipline does show that our referrals have dropped dramatically by 77% from 82 referrals this time last year to just 19. We attribute this to the use of school-wide basic procedures in combination with the implementation of trauma-informed practices and BIST, which has created a positive culture for students. It is also important to note at Truman Elementary, there were few changes in certified staffing. This has provided a consistent culture, trusted relationships between colleagues, parents, students, and adults. In regards to our racial equity work, our equity team and our care team work in conjunction. Our equity team does meet once a month to assess the climate of the building and evaluate our effectiveness as a staff in breaking down the barriers for our students and with each other as a staff. The equity team promotes culturally responsive teaching practices in classrooms and throughout the building. The equity team is learning how to facilitate more courageous conversations between adults by using mindful inquiry to address potentially unfair practices. Our care team meets once a month to work through the care cycle and to discuss observations we have on our focused students. The goal is to partner with parents more deeply and to serve students. The principal's advisory council gives our students a voice. We have one representative from every classroom that meets with me monthly, and we talk about their concerns, the positives, the dreams they have for Truman, and some really great things have come out of the principal's advisory council. For example, they are the ones that started our after-school enrichment clubs, the beautification of our bathrooms, hot breakfast, character traits of the month, and our school-wide talent show. Our parental involvement also shows an increase from the past two years. At meet and greet, we had 63% of our parents attend, which is 20% gain over the last two years. Our open house was a success with 121 parents attending, and our PTA is thriving with 81 members, most of which are parents. We also have 12 men in the community currently signed up to become approved mentors who will be part of our MEN as Student Helpers Initiative, or MASH. Our overall goals for the 19-20 school year are that in the areas of English, language arts, mathematics, and science, that we will increase the number of students scoring at the proficient and advanced level to 50% while decreasing the number of students who score in the below basic to 20% or less. Goal number four is that we increase the number of students attending school 90% of the time and to reach that 89% mark. And goal number five is to reduce the number of discipline referrals by using all of the school-wide positive behavior implementations. I'm very grateful to have just returned from the National Summit for Courageous Conversations. It was a wonderful trip of learning, and I feel even better equipped to serve our students and families in Hickman Mills. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have one question.
Yes, Director Briggs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Oh, okay. Well, I was gonna ask you, was it a mistake when you said, would 25 men or 12? We have 25 men signed up?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. It was 25 men that we are, we're hoping for. Right now, we currently have 12 signed up.
Okay, got you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, you said that by the end of the year, our goal is to have at least 25% of our students reading at, on grade.
At winter.
At winter. So can you share with the board what strategies you're using, some examples of how you're going to reach that goal?
Absolutely. We are, we know that our tier one instruction with, which is all of our district resources, has to be consistent. And so as I do walkthroughs, we are looking for consistent implementation of our curriculum, but we're also looking for that tier two where teachers are differentiating, where they're pulling students to the teach table to provide instruction at their level, where they are creating centers that meet their needs. Just tonight at parent-teacher conference, I witnessed teachers that had packets and baggies put together for parents to take home so they could work on things at home to partner. We also have a 550 reading specialist in our building who is helping our third, fourth, and fifth graders. And then our instructional coach has flexed her schedule on non-meeting days to be pulling groups to meet with students that are not performing at grade level. And we're not going to wait until January to test. We're gonna do some progress monitoring in November. We also have created this huge data wall where we have each child up on a card, and we have targeted groups of children that we are hoping to move.
Madam President.
Yes.
I think you said you had a 15% increase in attendance over last year. Any idea what you can attribute that to?
I have no idea. They're just coming. Kids wanna come to school. Parents are more involved. We've been doing attendance work for four years. For four years, we've been encouraging kids to come, forming partnerships with parents. My FSL is always talking to parents, finding out what is stopping you from coming to school? How can we partner with you to help you get here? Is it transportation? Is it some other issue that we can help you with? And so when we begin to bridge, build a bridge with parents, we see more and more students coming to school. And if kids want to come to school because they're excited about what they're learning, more and more students come. They don't wanna miss. Matter of fact, they're practically jumping out of the car line to get in the building because they don't wanna be counted tardy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't forget to invite me to that attendance party.
Yeah. I will invite you. It's just we have so many kids with great attendance, it's gonna be packed.
It was packed last year.
Yeah, it's gonna be great. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Way to go, sir.
Ms. Edwards.
Welcome.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the proud principal of Warford Elementary, so I'm delighted tonight to share Warford's data with you, and I'm going to begin with our demographic data. We currently have 396 students at Warford, and 90.2% of our student population are students of color. All of our students receive free lunch, and our attendance is currently at 85.8%. We ended last school year with 76.3% of our students coming to school 90% of the time. This year, our attendance goal is 87%. In collaboration with our Caring for Kids community partners, the Local Investment Commission, and the key school employees, we are working together to strategize and implement ways that we can improve our attendance and help our families who need support to get their students to school on time and daily. Just in the last two days during parent-teacher conferences, our teachers have been trained to have strategic conversations with parents so we can partner with them, so we can have their students here on time, so we can remove those barriers and be able to help them be at school. As we take a look at our ELA map data, you will see a slight 1% decline from 2018 to 2019. Our math map data shows a 4% increase. We went from 32.1% to 35.41. Warford scores are higher than the district average, and we are working towards increasing outcomes for the 2020 map. In ELA, there has been a shift of the number of students scoring in the higher performance tiers with fewer students in below basic in 2019. In math, there has been an increase in the number of students scoring advanced or proficient, and a shift in moving below basic students to the basic performance tier. One fourth-grade teacher did have a score in math of 65%. Science scores were not made available as our science data has not yet been released. When we examine our I-Ready data, you will see the following percentages for students that are on above grade, on grade level or above grade level for the grades K through five. So currently in reading, we are looking at 18% for the fall and 12% for math. This is a new, more rigorous assessment that we are using, and we are using this information to drive our instruction. Next, we are looking at important data findings that include discipline, racial equity, and parental involvement. Our discipline referrals remain on par as the same time last year, even having 100 more students in last year. We're training staff on our Trauma Smart techniques and the application of the BIST philosophy to work effectively with students and reduce the amount of office referrals. The Warford Equity Team has revisited the protocols and goals for working with staff this school year. In professional development, we presented on self-identity and breaking down stereotypes, examining privilege, and even further white privilege. This work was important so individuals are to be able to confidently identify themselves before going deeper into the work. The care team members will share the equity checklist with staff and how they begin the collaborative action research in their classrooms by identifying focal students and beginning their care cycles. There are several opportunities for parents to be involved at Warford. This year, our attendance at events has been significantly greater. Parents receive flyers via Peachtree email distribution. They get notices with students as well as personal phone messages from the principal sent through our Blackboard Messenger. Our focus goals are to ultimately increase our students' scoring advanced to proficient in ELA, math, and science to 50% or better, while we're decreasing the number of students scoring below basic to 20% or less. We're working to professionally develop our teachers to develop assessment-capable learners, as well as to be data-responsive instructors. This year, we have partnered with the Literacy Lab to provide one-on-one reading tutoring to identify students during the school day. Manipulatives for grade-level standards have been purchased to aid teachers in teaching the concrete, prectoral, abstract math progression. Teachers will also launch the transformative project Lead the Way STEM Curriculum to immerse students in science and increase achievement. Pairing our Trauma Smart and our BIST will decrease discipline events and give teachers the tools to help them communicate more effectively with students. These goals will help us to move closer to producing outcomes that are indicative of a high-performing school. I thank you for allowing me to share my school improvement plan with you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I do have one question. I noticed that in the month of September, you had 31 discipline referrals.
Yes, ma'am.
So what type, what, what strategies are you using to decrease that number for the month of October and November?
One thing that we did implement this year is we do have in our schedule, class meetings. So we do have all grade levels that have that in their structured day, and teachers are able to circle their students up and discuss issues and concerns that may be happening so they can build those relationships in the classroom. That way, discipline issues are taken care of in the classroom because that's where we want students to receive the instruction rather than being referred to the office.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Mrs. Moore, principal at Ingalls Elementary. My former elementary school.
Yes. Home of the Hawks. Good evening, everyone. I'm Connie Moore, and I'm so excited about this being my first year at Ingalls, and I appreciate the opportunity to share our data with you this evening. I will begin with our demographic data. We currently have 353 students at Ingalls. 86% of our population are students of color, and 100% of our students receive free lunch. Our attendance is currently 85.8% as of today, which is exceeding our goal of 85%. Our attendance data from 18-19 shows that we ended the year with 64% of our students coming to school 90% of the time, so we have quite an increase at this point.
appreciate the opportunity to share our data with you this evening. I will begin with our demographic data. We currently have three hundred and fifty-three students at Ingles. Eighty-six percent of our population are students of color, and a hundred percent of our students receive free lunch. Our attendance is currently eighty-five-point-eight percent as of today, which is exceeding our goal of eighty-five percent. Our attendance data from eighteen-nineteen shows that we ended the year with sixty-four percent of our students coming to school ninety percent of the time, so we have quite an increase at this point. As we focus on our attendance goal of eighty-five percent or higher, we are working with community partners to create incentives for our students that are meeting our attendance goal monthly. My FSL and I review attendance data weekly to identify students who are consistently later absent. We will meet with parents to offer resources to improve attendance. Through our Attendance Works initiative, we have identified our moderately absent students, and teachers are meeting with families during conferences this week to discuss challenges and barriers, and then create a plan to increase attendance. Our two thousand and nineteen EOLAP map data shows an increase of four-point-two percent in our proficient and advanced students from two thousand and eighteen. Our two thousand and nineteen math map data shows a five-point-five percent increase in proficient and advanced from two thousand and eighteen. We also saw a decrease in the number of students falling in the below basic category from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. Science scores have yet to be released, and that data will not be comparable as two thousand and nineteen was a new test. I don't know how to scroll. Oh, there we go. There we go. So sorry, I'm technology-challenged. Oh, I can use that, too. Thank you so much, Dr. Osborne. I love how our principals work together. So, our formative data that we're using this year is iReady, and our iReady data shows eleven-point-three percent of our students are reading at or above grade level for EOLAP, and six-point-two percent of our students are at or above grade level for math. iReady is a new assessment this year, and we are anticipating a twenty-five percent gain in our winter scores, as teachers are using iReady resources to plan Tier Two instruction to address student needs in EOLAP and math. Next, we will look at other important data findings that include discipline, racial equity, and parent involvement. Our discipline referrals are up from the same time last year. We believe transition and leadership may be impacting discipline numbers as I set firm routines and expectations for teachers and students. Over the year, I expect to see a decrease in referral numbers as we work to transform our building climate and culture through the full implementation of Trauma Smart practices and BIST. Ingles Equity Team is comprised of eight members. The newly-formed team has met multiple times this year to plan for PD for staff around racial equity. So far this year, the team has spent time revisiting the Four Agreements and Six Conditions, as well as the need to locate oneself on the Compass. E-Team members led a discussion around an article on white privilege and its impact on our students. Our care team has added new staff and will identify focal students to begin their care cycles this month. My principal's advisory council consists of seven fifth-grade and one fourth-grade student. We meet monthly to discuss school and community events and projects. Students provide feedback on what they think is working well at Ingles and what we could improve on. As we look at parent involvement, for this year, we have many events planned, but I will be reporting on the following listed below. Our first two events, Meet the Teacher and Open House, we've seen a large increase in attendance. We contribute those gains to extensive promoting of the events. For Open House, teachers made personal invitations to parents through phone calls or class dojo. Our focus goals and objectives are targeted to increase our proficient and advanced students in EOLAP, math, and science to at least fifty percent, and decrease the number of students in below basic to twenty percent or less. Strengthening our Tier One instruction as well as securing a 550 reading teacher will be used to increase EOLAP scores. Math instruction will continue to focus on our Go Math curriculum, as well as the increased use of manipulatives with students to go from concrete to abstract teaching of math concepts. We will implement Project Lead the Way curriculum to increase student achievement in science. As we work to decrease our discipline events and increase our attendance, we will increase our focus on Trauma Smart principles and language at Ingles. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm willing to answer questions at this point.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was the last of the Principal Executive summaries. You have more next month. We'll continue up into January. And so, the first item under Executive Updates and Information is Item Eight Point One, Enrollment and Attendance Report. And tonight, we have the pleasure of hearing Ms. Teresa Tanner presenting information for Dr. Skinner.
Welcome.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Superintendent Dr. Cargill. I do have the pleasure to present to you the report from Dr. Skinner. And much of it is, you've already heard from the four schools that you talked about, that they did so eloquently share their attendance plans. And so, what has occurred previous to the beginning of the school year is that Dr. Skinner sent out to all of the principals a chart of data that says, listed all of the students that were in the moderately chronic absence. So, that's like your ten to nineteen percent absence. Those were the target students that those principals were to work with and work with their teachers, and to use the Attendance Works Plan that we've been working with, with Dr. Kia Turner through the United Way Grant. So, they did mention all of those plans and identified those students. So, we're glad to see that that's working well. So, on the report, I do want to highlight a couple of things. The first part is, this is the September from last year to September of this year data. And so, if you, this part is just looking at each grade level district-wide. And one of the things that we wanted to mention is that it's, we are up two-and-a-half percent from where we were at this time last year from September. And then, we know that kindergarten has moved out of Irvin and moved into the elementary schools, so we've kind of watched that attendance to see how well the kindergarten's doing. And we're excited to announce that their attendance is up over ten percent. So, we're excited that the kindergarten attendance rate is increasing. So, you can see all of the areas in green where all of the increases that we've had district-wide for every single grade level. The next portion of the data chart is broken out by individual school building and then by grade level for that building. So, you'll see all in the green. So, and then, it's a little misconceiving because the Compass did not have kindergarten last year, so their kindergarten attendance rate went really high, so seventy-three percent. But that's because we didn't have anything to compare it to from last year because they weren't in the building. Same thing with sixth grade. Sixth grade looks like it's pretty, pretty negative with negative ninety-one percent, but they are not in the elementary buildings this year. So, that's why those numbers are a little skewed. And we did want to highlight a couple of schools in particular. Ingles, their attendance is significantly, they're all in green, so all of those grade levels are higher than they were the previous year. And the same thing again with Truman. The majority of Truman's grade levels are exceeding where they were at this time last year. The last notation I wanted to make is down at the last part of the chart, and this is where the district is looking at it from September two thousand and seventeen, September two thousand and eighteen, and September two thousand and nineteen, and looking at the increases. So, like, Irvin has an increase now that it is an elementary building versus just a pre-K building at eighty-seven percent. It also shows what the enrollment was. So, the enrollment may have decreased in some of the buildings, however, the students are coming more frequently to school, so that's what we want to hear, too. So, we definitely want to highlight Truman at ninety-two percent, and highlight Smith-Hale at eighty-five percent, and Ruskin at eighty-two percent. Is there any questions that I can answer at this time?
Yes. Vice President Brakes.
I wish she was still here, but Truman, you know, that was, I mean, I don't know if anybody knows the story, but Truman is leading the way, you know? And that was something that we didn't, you know, couldn't have thought of today, but they're leading the way. So, I know she'll probably look at this, but I want to tell her job well done.
I'll make sure she knows that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Rowe, who will present the updates that we received today from DESI in terms of student performance. And just to make sure Board members know, we do not have an APR score that DESI has released, but we are able to speak about the areas of highlights, the things that we've done really well, and the areas that we will continue to focus on throughout this whole year to further increase our scores and better serve students pre-K through twelfth grade. At this time, please help me welcome Ms. Katie Rowe.
You're welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I left three sets of documents on your seat, and I want to take a minute to sort of walk you through those, if you would. You should have one document that's titled Twenty-Nineteen Map and EOC Summary Data that has some green on it. That's going to be where I'm going to primarily speak from. It's a conglomeration of all of the other somewhat confusing documents you have behind it. You then should also have a pretty yellow, green, blue set of documents. This is the one that the media is sort of going crazy over. The one that they're describing is difficult to understand. This is also the one that Ms. Wumble pointed out in her press release that, you know, the point of DESI moving away from a score into this is so that districts have the data to look at, to inform decisions about how to move forward. So, this is helping districts to paint a picture and sort of take the focus or the emphasis away from this whole ranking of districts and giving them a bottom-line score. And then, the final set of data you have is what's called the Supporting Data Document. Looks like a spreadsheet. The reason I wanted you to, Dr. Cargill, and I wanted you to have a copy of this document is that it does show trend data. So, it will show you in each of the MSIP five categories what has been the trend over the last three years in terms of proficient or advanced, what's our attendance rate over three years, what's our grad rate over three years. So, that's why we felt like this was important for you to have, because it does show the history. The one thing that I do want to point out before I start talking a little bit more closely about the data is something that the principals mentioned, which is two thousand and seventeen was an entirely different test and an entirely different set of data. So, DESI has all over their website, "Do not compare two thousand and seventeen to anything else." It's kind of all on its own, so you'll have that. So, I wanted to describe those documents first. So, what I did then with the data is we've gone through and sort of unpacked the data, and I'm going to go back and reference this document. And on the slide, you see some points of pride and opportunities for growth. The first point of pride that I would point out is that in the math category, you'll see several areas of green. As a district, we did increase our proficient or advanced from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen by two-point-four percent. And you'll see that all grade levels, with the exception of fifth, seventh, and Algebra Two, had an increase from last year, so you'll see that highlighted in green on this document. You'll also notice on the supporting documents that although our EOLAP was not an area of increase, we are getting closer to that state target, so we're in the category called Approaching. DESI looks at four categories, so they look at, are you on the floor? Are you in the lowest category? Are you approaching the target? Are you on track with what the target is? Or are you exceeding? So, in EOLAP, although our percentage went down just slightly, we are approaching what the state target would be. That third star on the left-hand side of the slide, we did have a tremendous increase in our Standard Four under College and Career Readiness. That's what measures our percentage of students who are doing well in advanced placement courses, in dual-credit courses, in their industry-recognized credentials in Project Lead the Way. So, we had an increase of twenty-three-point-eight percent. And then, finally, our four-year graduation rate is eighty-nine-point-four percent, almost a twenty percent increase from the last five years. And you'll see on, again, on the pretty-colored document, that our progress falls in the exceeding category, so as high as we could possibly be. So, we're super excited about that. Of course, we know that we have plenty of areas for growth, lots of opportunities, continuing to get an increase in core academic areas, so math, science, social studies, and English. And all four of those is important, is something that we have to continue to talk about. What does Tier One instruction look like? It's why Ms. Franklin and I are constantly doing building walkthroughs with principals. We do instructional rounds during benchmarking sessions. We have data talks that happen at least quarterly, if not more often. Continue to increase the percentage of students who score at or above the state target in Standard Three-One to Three-Three, which is our percentage of students who are meeting the state standard on the ACT, the ASVAB, the Work Keys exam. You will see on this document that our percentage did go up from last year, went from thirty-eight-point-nine to forty-point-eight, so about a two percent increase. But really, we need to be closer to at least that fifty percent mark to be hitting our target. So, that's definitely an area that we are working to improve upon. Mr. Allen has a couple of things going at the high school in terms of ACT prep with students and getting students assigned to an ACT prep class. And then, finally, you've heard a lot about attendance tonight, but it's still an area of improvement. We are not meeting the state target in terms of the percentage of students. We have gradually gone down. This last year, we ended at seventy-nine-point-nine. Our goal is to end at at least eighty-four percent this year. So far, we're at the highest ninety-ninety attendance we've had in the last three years as of right now, the month of October, with several buildings. Actually, we celebrated at our last principals' meeting that all but two buildings were meeting their target, and by quite a bit. They had some cushion over that eighty-four percent, so that's a celebration for sure. Some other things that we felt was important to add to our Hickman Mills story around this annual percentage rate. The first one is that points don't equal progress. So, the reason that this is up here is because you heard me describe that in math, we did see an increase. However, that's not in any way reflected in the formula in the way in which it's calculated. So, it's important that we look at all of that. We look at the DESI formula. We look at how are individual grade levels performing and how are we as a district? So, we know when the data's going up, we're moving in the right direction. We have more progress to make. We certainly are looking forward to consistency in state assessment, so we are finally going to have a consistent year of a math and EOLAP test. This will be our first year of a consistent year in science, and there is nothing out of DESI world that says that any standards or any assessments are going to change. It becomes really difficult. It becomes really difficult when you, when we have a fairly high teacher turnover and we have a pretty high mobility rate, and when the state changes the test four times in five years, it becomes difficult for districts like ours to keep up. Not impossible, and certainly doable, and we saw that particularly in math when we got an increase, but we know it's something we have to keep working on. Other things that aren't calculated in the APR that, of course, we believe are very important are efforts around real-world learning. We received a grant. We're getting ready to launch some more academies and apply for another component of the Kaufman Grant. We're way ahead of the game in terms of other Kansas City high schools of what they're doing around real-world experiences, so that's super exciting. I already talked about attendance efforts, so again, that's something that is going to reap us rewards at the end. And then, the STEAM and PBL expansion has probably been my favorite so far this year. It's been really awesome to see teachers engaged in Project Lead the Way, see kids start working on what is the design model, and we look forward to seeing those payoffs, not just in science, but in other curricular areas as well.
Well, I do have a few. For some reason, this twenty-three percent in dual-credit increase, I believe a few months back, we asked how many students are taking advanced placement and dual-credit? How many students are taking that, taking advantage of those?
I can certainly find that out and send it to you.
Yeah, because I believe we asked that question months ago, and that's going to be really, really important, especially when you see a twenty-three-point-eight percent increase. My other question as, you know, being the board chair and having the opportunity to talk to other educators in surrounding areas, it is critical that this district, from my perspective, see an increase in those content areas.
Absolutely.
I mean, we discussed the graduation rate, but when I look at the STAR data and when we review these principal reports, then we have students not reading at grade level, and we say how many kids were graduating. I just, for some reason, can't quite wrap my brain around that. So, if we're going to sing praises about the graduation rate, it's very critical that we see our students at least performing at basic level in this district and throughout the district. That's my opinion. That will be my stance moving forward. Yes, Director Brooks.
Did DESI call folks down to Jefferson City and tell you how to evaluate this stuff that they've sent? Because, you know, I'm a great, great, great-grandparent. But if I had a great, great, great-grandchild in this district, or not in this district, but in a district across Missouri, and something come up with "floor," "on track," "exceeding," "target," I wouldn't know, and I'm sure my child would know what that meant. And, "Are you progressing?" And I just went, "Did they do any more than send this information out? Because you went through it well." But even if you were going through it, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I know my IQ is not as high as, you know, probably below the national average. But how do you, how, and I know, and I'm wondering whether Superintendent Dr. Cargill and others are complaining about this because I know the STAR editorial really, really took the, took DESI on. And I suspect other papers around the state might be doing the same. But how, how do they, you said changed four times and five. How do they expect parents and board members and administration, teachers to deal with this?
So I will share that students do still get the age-old. They get a colored document. Actually, they were just released this week, and they'll go home with our students here in the next couple of weeks. But it'll still show, are you advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic? So a parent will still get that, which I think parents are still very used to and understandable. What it is hard to convey to parents is what you just said, which is if I'm a parent and my student was traditionally a proficient student, and then all of a sudden, I get this score report that says that they're basic or below basic. Is it the school's fault? Did something happen? Did? Or is it a result of the test changing so many times in the last several years? So that's what becomes difficult to convey to parents. Like I said, we just got the scores, and we'll be working on our messaging to parents. There's always a letter that goes home, and so we'll attempt to convey that in the letter. But that does become difficult to spread to parents, to your, to your average person. Yes.
Yes, Vice President Reagan.
Is there any way, as a board, we could see maybe some surrounding districts of the things that they are doing when it comes to their getting the feedback as far as with the, sending the stuff home with the parents? Maybe we can look at some of it, because as Mr. Brooks has just mentioned, with our surrounding districts, they seem to be tackling it. So how can we tackle or tap in or whatever is needed to do for our district to get to where we need to get? I think, you know, is there any, you know, do we, do we do that or not?
In terms of the score reports?
Yeah, do we look at, do we, can we like, maybe?
There's a standard template that DESI provides. They provide us with a letter. So most districts utilize that letter and tweak it in some way just to personalize it for the district. We use that in my former district, and I know my own students in another district have that. So in terms of that, yes, I think that's easy. In terms of other strategies, I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
So to respond in terms of how we collaborate with other districts, there are multiple ways in which we do that through community and different committees that members of the district-level team serve on. For example, Mr. Allen, when he had, when he attends the Kansas City Metropolitan Principal meetings, he's able to connect with other building leaders. Ms. Rowe serves on the State Committee for MSIP Standards. So when Mr. Brooks asks the question in terms of how are we communicating our concerns or questions around the different changes that have been, that have happened with MSIP information, Ms. Rowe serves on that committee and speaks very well in terms of the challenges, the obstacles, and the barriers that we face as a district. And so, yeah, we're able to collaborate. I collaborate with superintendents all the time in terms of asking, "What are you doing to address this?" But we have to also acknowledge that our populations are different. And so what may work in one district may not always work in Hickman Mills. But you get ideas, and we brainstorm strategies that we can implement that will be beneficial for our students and our families in Hickman Mills. To answer your question, Ms. Briggs, in terms of the number of, or the percentage of dual-credit courses, the information was provided to the board September 17th. And just to review, there, during 2016-17, 53.8% of our students passed with the passing grade. 17, 18, 44.9. And then for the past school year, we increased by 23.3% at 68.2 for the number of students that took and passed their, those dual-credit courses. And it's in, if you want to refer to it yourself, it's in ESB for board members, September 17th.
Well, my specific question is, how many of our high school students?
That's the percentage. We can equate a number to it.
Yeah, that's, that's the number that I'm looking for.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We are moving on to consent item, Board of, Consent Items, Board of Education. Have you had an opportunity to review all the items under consent? If so, we're seeking, the chair is seeking a motion to accept all the consent items.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, as, make a, we accept the consent 9.0 as it is from 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3.
Hearing no discussion. Ms. Peyton. Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to new business.
First item is Ms. Wilsey. Finance report.
This is the financials as of September 30th, 2019. The total revenues, the working budget is sitting at $90.3 million. September receipts were $3.02 million. The year-to-date receipts are $10.06 million. For a remaining budget to be received of $79.07 million. Percent of funds received are 11.8 compared to 13.2 at this time last year. Total expenses, our working budget is $83.3 million. September expenses were $6.05 million. Year-to-date is $16.04 million. Remaining budget is $66.09 million. Percent of expenses paid are 19.7 compared to 19.2 at this time last year. Fund balance, there's not a whole lot of change this month. The fund balance is sitting at a 15.007. 20.5 for the 2021 projection. 24.6 for the 2122, and 27.5 for the 22-point, or 2223 school year. There weren't any major changes at all in the month of September. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yep.
Yes, Vice President.
And I don't know if it's going to be ready to ask right now. But there's, we were asking in the Finance Committee about this because there's going to be some things that's going to hit the budget coming for next year. And I don't know if Mr. Wickler has had a chance to talk to you about it. Could you give us that information once we, I guess, get to that, that area for the urban playground thing? Because that was something that I had asked about, what, how much the percentage would be coming out of the percentage that we?
The impact would be a reduction of .2. It's in the memo, under cost analysis.
The finance was done before that.
Yeah, well, I didn't.
That's why it wasn't included in the finance report. But it will be on a slide next month showing how much it'll affect the fund balance.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is me as well. I'm going to ask Lorenzo Boyd with Stiefel Nichols to come up and take on the next.
I'm on the same point, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So the item that we have in front of you today is a, I think you have the memo that Dr. Cargill and Shelley Wilsey put together. We have a resolution that we'd like for the board to consider to pay in advance of their maturity about 1.1 million of principal amount of the 2016 bonds, the 2024 maturity. So in effect, what the district is doing is taking about $1.3 million out of its debt service fund and going to put that money into an escrow account with UMB Bank to pay the principal and interest on the 2024 maturity of the 2016 bond issue in advance of that maturity. So they'll take a little bit over, about 1.2 million, 1.26 million. The other will be used for cost of issuance. And that money will sit in escrow and pay the principal and interest on those bonds to their, I mean, to their maturity date of 2024. The reflection of that is about $80,000 of savings from now until 2024, until the final maturity of those bonds, by paying those off early. And the resolution was drafted by Ms. Jean Masler of the Harwick Law Firm. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, colleagues? Director Brooks, go ahead. Go ahead, Director Brooks.
The chair, the vice chair. So that means that when our election in August of next year, and we go for that bond, we will then be four years of reducing, of ending the 2016 bond.
Right. So what we're doing now is paying, there's a, there's a 1.1 million associated with that 2024 maturity. So right now, the district has about, I'm just throwing out numbers, 38 million of bonds outstanding. So paying off that 1.1 million, then the district has about 36.9 million outstanding. So it increases your, your capacity.
So what did, now, what would that look like? And I'm optimistic it's going to pass in August. What does that look like in terms of that, the 2020 bond issue and the one that's, that's the 2016?
So we, we don't know at this point because it's all contingent upon interest rates, actually. So we're about nine months away from passing that bond issue. But we did run very conservative numbers. We did use about 4% interest rates when we projected that bond issue in 2020. Right now, if the district were to do the bond issue right now, you probably would be looking at about 3%. But if interest rates rise to, let's say, 5%, by the time you put that ballot initiative together, then that could impact how much you can go to the voters.
So maybe I, maybe I asked the wrong question again. Ask it the right way.
So what will that do to the 2016?
Oh, right.
What, what, what will happen to it? Where will we be?
So the 2016 bond issue still is going to be paid through 2024. So right now, the 2016 bond issue, I brought those numbers with me. You're just simply taking about 1.1 million of the, of the bonds that are outstanding and paying those off early. So if you look at the 2016 bond issue, the final maturity on that bond issue is 2024. But associated with that, actually, that maturity that we're paying off, we have the numbers right here. Yeah, right here. So the 2016 bonds run through 2028. So we're simply paying for the 5% bond of the 2024 maturity. And actually, there's about 3 million of that maturity. We're only paying off 1.1 million of that 3 million that's associated with that bond.
So if we continue to pay on that in 2028, that will finish that now. What will be the timeframe for the 2020 bond? What, what, what year? Refresh my memory. What, what, how many years are we putting on that?
20 years.
20 years.
Yeah. So we will issue, so we will issue the bonds in, let's say, if it passes in August, we'll issue the bonds, you know, eight weeks later. So we're looking at.
20 years.
20 years from that point.
And I'm 87. Will I be able to? I'll be around.
You'll, you'll be around.
Help you pay it off, but I will be around.
That was a song by The Spinner, so I'll be around.
Old school.
Old school.
Is there anything else to discuss here?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request of board action relative to the.
He didn't say.
Excuse me. Shelley?
Yes.
You want us to take action on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Stick around.
Request of board action relative to the approval of the 2019 debt service.
Scroll up the, there you go, right there. Thank you. All right, at this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
So I motion that we approve, I would motion for the approval of the debt service deficits of approximately $1.1 million of the district's general obligation debt.
Second. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Peyton.
I have, I just have a question. And I think it's important, was that, the motion, I think, to our council, does that adequately describe what's taking place here? Because I, I've had experience, sometimes you don't, somebody can come back. Not that the, somebody who may challenge something. I'm just concerned about the motion. Did it really include what was necessary to, to cover any questions, scrutiny?
The resolution authorizes a documentation and approves the escrow agreement and all which legally defeats this.
I just want to know whether the motion that was made and seconded before we vote, whether or not it met the criteria that you were presenting. And if you think so to the council, I am satisfied.
I wasn't sure who you were asking the question of. If you were asking the question of me or if you were asking the question of, of bond counsel.
I think of you.
Okay. Yes, I think the motion adequately does that.
Moving on, Mrs. Peyton.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right, our next item, item 10.3, Ms. Rowe.
Good evening again. Tonight, I'm here to present on Ms. Franklin's behalf, requested board action related to the technology surplus items for this month. The technology department will be sending the items listed on your board memo out of the district for surplus. The items will be removed from the inventory once they are approved from surplus and removed from the district. Each of the items that are listed there are unusable, failed, and no longer viable to be used. The superintendent recommends approval of the removal of surplus items no longer serviceable to the school system and authorize, authorizes the appropriate disposal of these items.
At this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the removal of 10.3, request board action relative to approval of the removal of technology surplus. 10.03, I mean.
Second.
Hearing no discussion. Ms. Peyton.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan. Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, I'm, I'm like really going to smile on this one because this is one that I'm excited about, and I. excited about, and I hope that you will be excited about as well. So tonight, I'm going to present some information regarding Hope Hangout. The Hickman Mills Prevention Coalition, HMPC on your memo, has requested the use of space over at our new Burke Academy to support their after-school and weekend program for students at Ruskin and Burke in grades nine through 12. And they call that program the Hope Hangout. So some of the background information is that Hope Hangout is an after-school program just for our students in grades nine through 12. It runs Monday through Friday from approximately 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then, boys and girls, males and females, attend on alternating Saturdays for approximately four hours in the afternoons. The Hickman Mills Prevention Coalition has four main goals, and you can see those on your, on your board memo. And those goals are hoped to be one of the strategies to carry out or meeting those goals is the implementation of the Hope Hangout, which has been at a local church, and they are requesting to move into the, a school district space. So those four goals are decreasing substance use and abuse among teens, decreasing violent crimes, working to help increase mental health awareness, and then developing and implementing strategies around bringing awareness to all of these issues in our particular community. So the hangout is a safe place for our students to go after school, on weekends, and during extended breaks. During this time, they receive academic support, social emotional support, some recreation, and extra meals. Marva Moses is the current director of the Hope Hangout. Several weeks ago, I had an opportunity to meet with Marva Moses. Ms. Corin joined the meeting as principal at Burke Academy, and Mr. Weekly was also there. And so we were able to learn a little bit more about the program, what she was looking for, and essentially why she was wanting to move into one of our spaces, i.e. Burke. And really, what she expressed to us is that she is supporting our students, which of course, we know that. She has outgrown the space that she's currently in because enrollment is up with the number of students that she's able to support through the after-school program. She's had really good feedback via qualitative surveys from students about enjoying their time there, feeling like it's a safe place they can go after school, and she'd love to make it more accessible to students. In particular, she spoke very passionately about being at Burke because she feels like that, she shared that she does not like the term "at risk," but she understands that those students who attend Burke have some unique challenges compared to other students, and she would like to be right there and accessible to students who want to take advantage, and she could then help promote the program even more. There is no cost to the district. Marva would not be utilizing any kitchen space or anything that would require an additional cost to the district, and she would be able to be there in the evening hours when a custodian was still on duty. The superintendent does recommend approval of Hope Hangout utilizing space at Burke Academy to support the after-school program for our students.
Yes, Vice President Reagan.
First of all, when we described this at the facilities meeting, I wanted to bring it back to the board. You said this is open up on the weekends too, correct?
Yes.
So would, would our custodians have to be there at that time?
We actually have talked about treating Marva and the program similar that, that we do other contracted people, such as like our milk vendors, where they would have a badge and an access to get into the building during that time.
One of my concerns is, and is there, is this a contract that's going to be written up for this?
So there is an MOU that legal has reviewed, revised, and provided feedback on, and that a copy could be provided, absolutely. But yes, we would, we would enter into an MOU with the Hickman Mills Prevention Coalition.
And how much would the rent be?
There would be no charge.
Yeah, the proposal is not that we're charging Hope Hangout because they're serving Hickman Mills students.
So we would, I'm just looking at the wires and terrorists on our building and at a free cost to, I mean, I'm just one of the seven. And security, I'm looking at security. Who's going to be doing that?
Well, right now, I mean, they'll be at Burke, and so.
I'm talking about on the weekends and stuff, like 4:00 to 6:00. I think you said it's going to be open from 3:00 to 6:00.
Well, I don't know what the weekend hours are, but right now, the, the church, they don't require security. And so there hasn't been any situations that have arisen while they were at Bethel that required a security guard to work with, again, our students. And so that is not in our, our proposal at this time to hire or include a security guard for, to work with Hickman Mills students.
And the location that potentially has been identified is on the P D side of Burke in that first left-hand wing. So that very first room on the right is what we've tentatively looked at as a space that she would bring in her belongings that she already has at Bethel to set up a safe place, and then the double-locking doors would then prevent access to other parts of the building.
As I stated in the facilities committee, C E C has a contract with us, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm sorry, the building that's down right by Ruskin, that.
C A C.
C A C, I'm sorry. They have a contract with us in which they do give us rent. I don't think it's fair if we're going to charge one person, and they do a lot for our community also, but we're going to just open our doors up and just give it to someone else without charging rent regardless even if they are. I mean, you're just opening up a thing, as long as you have insurance, you're saying, hey, look, we have a building, we'll give it to you. I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to understand this, comprehend this.
Miss Row to try to respond to that. So my reasoning for that is direct service to our students. And so that's the difference between C A C and Hope Hangout. And so I can move as the board directs me to move. The, the recommendation includes, does not include charging Hope Hangout or Combat for the acquisition of space. If the board directs me to charge Hope Hangout, we can move accordingly and see if they want to still access the space. That was not in the, in the recommendation.
Well, I would like to make a comment, and I'm going to probably, I think Hope Hangout provides a safe place for our children. How do I know that? Because the children have told me so. And not only have they told me so, I've had the opportunity to work with them through various workshops. And so if it keeps our kids safe and it decreases the amount of crime or, you know, and not necessarily crime, but it keeps our children safe, and plus, they are afforded a meal that I know that they look forward to, maybe a little too carby for me, but at least they have an opportunity to have a hot meal that they can count on. The safe place and a hot meal, even if that's one of the things that Marva, the Hope Hangout provided, even I know personally and professionally that a safe place and a hot meal goes a long way in a district that is 100% free and reduced lunch. So with that being said, you know, I, I support it, but will abstain when it's time to vote because I've worked with her and I have a personal and, and a personal and a professional relationship with Ms. Marva.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes.
I, I, we discuss all the time, the, our children don't have enough to keep them busy. And if there's someone who's going to provide for X number of our young people based on the kind of things that our young people have to endure in this district and other urban districts across this country and in this city, it would seem to me would be short-sighted for us if we did not allow someone who's providing a service to whatever number of our young people that may be ones that we're saving. And maybe over time, others will get involved. So I would certainly support allowing the district to come in and, and it seemed to me the right thing to do.
If there's no further discussion. Do you have something else, Mr. Reagan?
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm just, hopefully that we, as we do this, opening up the floodgate for one to, or helping our children, hopefully we'll look at everyone and just not stop here on just one person regardless of who they are and how many people know them.
That's a great point, Mr. Reagan.
That's all.
Vice President Reagan. All right, so if there's no further discussion.
Director Watry?
I motion. Yeah, I motion that we, oh. I motion that we, that the board approves Hope Hangout utilizing the space at Burke Academy to support their after-school program for H M C One School.
Second.
It has been second, any discussion? Mrs. Peyton.
Director Watry?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Abram?
Aye.
Vice President Reagan?
She is abstaining.
Motion carries five and one abstention.
Thank you, Ms. Mar. The next item, 10.5, Mr. Weekly, requested board action relative to the architect and engineering services for the 2020 bond.
Good evening, Board. As part of, you know, as last month, we voted to agree upon the August 2020 date for our next, next bond election. The first step in that process is, is acquiring an architect and engineering service for the planning stages of what we're going to, projects and, and the like. During, right after the, we, board meeting, we put out a bid, or put out an R F Q to qualify for architectural services. We had a pre-bid meeting that was required of architectural services to come in. Those three companies came in, Insight, D L R, and Hollis and Miller. Going through those packets, we decided to interview two of those three. Those two were interviewed by the Finance Committee, and, and I was included in that as well as, as part of that process. We interviewed, the two that we interviewed was D L R and Hollis and Miller on October 8th. The committee did a great job, both, both companies did a great job, and I think the committee had a very difficult time making a decision. Thought both companies did very well. The history of these two organizations, these two firms in this area is beyond measure. They are the premier architectural firms, engineering firms in the Kansas City metro area, and really through the Midwest. So we decided, the, the committee decided and recommended that we go with Hollis and Miller, mostly due to familiarity, history with the buildings, understanding the direction we're going, very up-to-date information regarding long-range planning, and their familiarity with the buildings and conditions for which, which they're in. Cost-wise, I have it down there for you that we're going to, they're going to, we're going to redo the long-range plan again to accommodate the new, new things that are happening within the district or have happened recently. So we'll update that. The bond plant, planning phase will be free of charge to us, so that process we go through for the next six to eight, nine, 10 months is going to be free of charge from them. And then below of, on that, on that, I'm going to bring it up for you. Oops. So what you see on the bottom is the, the range of construction ranges are costs. This is a, pretty much an industry standard across the board. Obviously, there's some negotiation a little bit here and there, but generally, these are the costs that architects and engineering services charge throughout this, throughout the Midwest, based on construction and engineering and drawing costs. So obviously, it's, you know, all, all pertains to how much we decided as a board to do as, how much we decide to put on the bond. So you see the percentages there, and, and tonight, we have with us Justin Durham, who's been one of our lead project manager and architect for several bonds, and also with him is Albert Ray, who also would be working with us if approved. So if you have any questions, be glad to answer us.
This did come before the Finance Committee, as Mr. Weekly said, and Mr. Watry and I were present, and we heard the, the presentation, which was a great presentation. It wasn't, it was difficult to determine which one of the firms we go with. Based on what Mr. Weekly said, with the experience and all that Hollis and Miller had, we voted to forward to the full board Hollis and Miller to be our architectural firm for the bond initiative.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Any questions of Justin or Albert of any kind that you may have?
Thank you for all your great work.
Can, can they guarantee us that the bond will pass? We, we didn't mention that.
Yes, no, I, I want to say that, I want to say it while you're standing here. I think that's one of the things that, those of you that weren't there during the interviews, one of the things that really stood out was both groups, and especially Hollis and Miller, did a great job of really an all-encompassing approach to passing the bond, planning the, the public events, being present there, presenting. And I think that's a, obviously, they know that's a key part of this. So their involvement in that process with P I O and myself and, and them is going to be something that will walk hand in hand also with the board, understanding how we're going to present, what we're going to present, and what, what projects are the right, right projects to pick for down the road. So, so that was a big part of that, so.
So if there's no discussion, the Chair is seeking a motion.
Madam President, I move that we accept the recommendation from the Finance Committee and the Director of Building Operations, Mr. Weekly, that the architectural firm of Hollis and Miller become the firm as we move into the 2020 bond initiative.
I second it.
Director Abram?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Director Watry?
Aye.
President Briggs?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, next. Next item, urban playgrounds. So as part of our shaping our future decisions, we made last year, urban, obviously, as we all know, went from a pre-K kindergarten building to a pre-K through five building. Some of the playground equipment, it obviously is geared more towards those students, and the playground area that the older students were occupying has a large set of air handler units that are quite noisy. And it was thought that maybe we should seek out new spaces for those children to, to play in. And so we, I have been working with several asphalt companies and playground equipment companies to come up with the best scenario. What we did was, I looked at what, with several asphalt companies, and the going rate nowadays for asphalt is anywhere from $4 a square foot to anywhere to almost $10 for, for play, for asphalt. I was able to work with one of our, our partners that we've worked in the past and told him what the reason was we were doing this, and he was able to get it down to $2.59 a square foot, which is unheard of. Districts across the city right now are paying $6 and $7 a square foot, so we're very lucky. In addition to that, he was able to also move us up on the schedules if, if decided to go with this tonight. Usually, you're six to eight to 12 weeks out. He was able to pick us up in the next three weeks to start that process, which I'm very pleased. Phillips Paving has a soft heart for kids, which I think is helpful. In addition to that, we're working with A B Creative. A B Creative is the playground company we've been working with for several years now, very good at what they do. They're a turnkey process where they design, order, install, and then guarantee everything that they do. So just a fabulous company that we work with in a national cooperative, so we get the best prices possible, and so we're very happy to work with them. The two prices that you'll see is the, for asphalt, in, in, in that, you'll also, the price you'll see is $59,821 for the asphalt, and for the playground equipment for itself with A B Creative is $99,94688, for a grand total of $159,767.88. This obviously was not something we budgeted for, and so this would lower the fund balance by .22% of the fund balances that were presented tonight by Shelley.
First of all, Mr. Weekly, to hear that we are working with Phillips Paving Company and the price break that they provide the district is amazing. I do and have always felt that Phillips Paving Company has, has been a great business and community partner, and please thank them for, if the board likes to approve this tonight.
I will do so. Josh himself, who I work with, is kind of my primary contact, is, he came out to the site and he goes, we're going to make this happen, find a way. So I'm, I was really pleased. He's a great partner. He's a great partner.
So, if there's no discussion, the chair is taking a motion to approve this request?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, what is it, 10.6, that we accept the requested board action relative to the approval of urban playground.
And Phillips.
Oh, well, it went on there.
Same here.
Okay, and Phillips Playground.
A second. Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
One last thing, I'm sorry. I put this, those of you that weren't at the interviews for the architect, this was the, I put this on your seat, just so you would have it. This is what Hollis and Miller submitted, so just so you'd have it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weekly.
All right, moving on to item 10.7, the second reading for the board and superintendent working agreement.
Good evening, directors.
Good evening.
I'm presenting for you the second reading of the board superintendent working agreement. This was, we had the first reading at our last month's meeting. This was the working agreement document that was requested by you all as a result of the strategic planning session. This is one of your strategic priorities is to complete this document. The document covers communication and roles and responsibilities, the roles of the board chair, individual board members, the conduct of, as a board as a whole, the role of the superintendent, role of board committees, meeting operations and decision-making, and I received one comment for a proposed change, and that was to, letter C, role of board chair, number six, which reads, which read in the version that you had, "The vice chair will perform these duties when the chair is not available." Now added to that is, the section now reads, "The vice chair will perform these duties when the chair is not available and should therefore be included on all communications to the chair." And so, that was the only proposed change that I received, and so, I mean, if it's your pleasure to approve, I presented that for second reading.
Madam President.
Yes.
I, uh, Ms. Phillips, Johnson, I heard the board, what was that about the board? I've read it, but I don't have it before me. About the board, somebody said about the board's relationship or something?
Um, so the...
Should there be something there about conduct of board members?
There is a section, section E, conduct of the board as a whole.
Yeah, that's what I, but it doesn't say anything about my conduct.
Um, the board, there's several sections where it's discussed throughout the document. The role of individual board members addresses conduct throughout that section, and then the conduct of the board as a whole is a section that involves the board's conduct.
Do you feel that covers individual board members?
I think the section that deals with, um, role of individual board members certainly addresses board member conduct. You know, it's, if it's something that you all want to consider further...
Well, I think number seventeen, board members shall...
Uh-oh.
She's trying to play.
Board members shall hold themselves and other board members accountable for complying with the code of conduct with this document and with your, you've got a code of ethics as well that's part of board policy that governs conduct of board members. It doesn't specifically address board behavior, if that's what you're asking. The code of conduct does not, but this document certainly addresses in more than one way board action, board individual member action.
So, would I have to move to add behavior into that?
Um, so, you could do one of two things. You can either make a motion to amend this document in some kind of a way before it's approved, or if the board does not, if it's the pleasure of the board to not take action on this this evening and have further discussion on that, you can do that and it can come back up for a vote at a later meeting, whichever is your pleasure.
Well, I think it'd be good to have, if my colleagues, Madam President and others, I think it'd be good to have some discussion on it. I hope there's a general feeling that that would be the case.
Discussion on the entire document?
Well, this particular item, and then...
If that is the board discretion, then we will just have a special meeting to come through the document as a group. This document, this mechanism was requested by the body of the Board of Education to create. If we continue to not read our documents and provide the adequate feed, I mean, the feedback, then we're going to continue to spend our will, so I will ask that we table this, I mean, hold this off to another meeting, but in the meantime, schedule a special session to come through the document.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion items. Item 11.2, student access to teacher ID badges. Okay, I guess we got that.
Well, do you want to discuss?
Student access to teacher ID badges.
Well, I'll start it off.
If we can keep our comments to discussions to two minutes.
I'm gonna try to do it in a half a minute. Went over to one of our schools with another director. Me and this other director had witnessed the student using one of our student badges, I mean, teacher, teachers badges. I made it known as a board member, it is my job to come and talk to the principals, it's my job to come and talk to you guys. So, that keeps out of everything that, any, anything or, you know, any other stories. So, at this time, when we had brought it to the board, we stated that film was looked at. Come to, I want to make a note that even looking at the tape, the video is not showing where we, that's the reason why you cannot see it. The video does not show, whereas you can see the student going through because there is no coverage there. So, we might want to look at getting better, better cameras in there for them. So, that's the reason why IT was not able to see it. So, that's the reason why. I think this is a security breach, as we do all know, and hopefully, we are taking this very serious. Not only that, it's also been, thank you, it also has been, this is not the first time, but this has been numerous of times that this has happened in this school. So, it just so happened I was able to witness it with another director.
That was the first time it was brought to my attention.
Right, I know. So, just moving forward, what we're going to do as a board, how can we address that?
Well...
Restore the practice, what we want to do.
Well, I will hope that students are not utilizing teachers or administrative badges.
Yeah, I witnessed it. I was there, and that's what we seen. It happened.
So, Madam President.
If I can reply, and so, in the review of the video footage with the information that I shared with the board, it was not to dispute whether or not you saw it, but we were not, I was not informed of a student name or what the student looked like so that I could connect with the building principal to try to find the student. So, we conducted our due diligence to try to look at the video to see if we could identify students. And so, if it didn't cover the area upon which you saw students accessing the badge reader, we have no way of being able to identify those students. So, your question was, what are we going to do? Is there going to be a restorative conference offered? It's impossible to do that unless we have a student's name that we're able...
I can get you the student, I can get you the student and I can get you the teacher, but I'm not trying to do all that because, like I said, it was witnessed with another colleague.
But that's the only way I can address it.
Okay, so you want to address it, but...
With that being said, this also provides an opportunity, and I want to get to Director Watry. And Director Watry, because you were next, do you have a comment?
My comment was, I mean, was it addressed with the building leader? Was it addressed, yeah, was it addressed with the superintendent building? So, when she spoke, I was 15 seconds. But if it was addressed with the building leader and it was addressed with the superintendent, I assume, I would only assume that proactive measures were taken to ensure that it doesn't happen again. And to comment regarding the restorative practice piece, as a restorative practice practitioner, I don't even know how that even plays into that.
All right, and so, this, this...
One more statement?
Yes.
So, in addition to, tonight is the first, I'm hearing, as superintendent, that you could identify the students. It would have been helpful to have that information at the onset in the report that this occurred. We could have had a different conversation today or even prior to this board meeting.
Right, and so, what I would like to add, and then we can move on to the next item, this affords us an opportunity to look at that potential blind spot in the building, and if it is the administration's decision to improve that blind spot and at the direction of the board, then this affords us an opportunity to do that. But it seems like there's some conversation that needs to be had about whatever that corridor is. I don't know. I don't, didn't see the video. All right, so, moving to the student athlete code of conduct.
Okay.
That was the blue springs.
Is there an update regarding the code of conduct booklet?
Yeah.
Dr. Kraga. There is no update in terms, you said it's in regards to an incident that occurred at a away game. I provided the board an update in terms of the information that I was able to gather from staff in terms of what conversations, what consequences were administered to students. There has not since the information was brought to my attention, there have not been any updates to the student code of conduct book. However, as a committee and a task force, that is what two members of the executive leadership team are leading this year to update our student handbook and then present information to the board for adoption of that handbook for the 2021 school year. Each month, those two members, Dr. Skinner, who serves on the educational accountability committee, provides an update to the educational accountability committee in terms of progress and where that work is at that particular moment each month.
May I speak to that?
Yes, Dr.
So, yes, Dr. Skinner and Ms. Franklin have established teams. Man, I'm 10 seconds in here. They have, they have teams of community stakeholders and staff. They've been fact-finding, data searching, creating, cross-referencing our current handbook with other districts to come up with measures for our district. So, at our next meeting, the next education accountability meeting, they will have proposed disciplinary actions and steps. So, right now, they're still kind of formulating that, and we'll have that at the next education accountability meeting, then we can kind of filter that more. But I will ask them to include student athlete measures, because I don't think that, we made that a specific point, but I can ask them to investigate that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I asked the Dr. Kraga, ask them to investigate that as well.
Absolutely. So, Ms. Wambow is serving as co-lead on the task force, and she's working with Dr. Skinner on this effort.
Okay, thank you. Item 11.5, ways to improve relationships, district staff, executive leadership team, and Board of Education.
Skip 11.4.
11.4?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, district policy and communication plan. Sorry, I just got my eyes checked yesterday. Do we have any discussion for that?
Policy committee, ain't that for me? Policy committee?
No, that's not...
Or what is this for?
His update would be at 12.4.
All right, so, there's no conversation about that. I don't even know how I got on the agenda. 11.5, ways to improve relationship, district staff and executive team leadership. I'm going to just kind of start briefly right here and just to say to my fellow colleagues here, that it's very critical that we continue to figure out ways how to work together in the best interest of children, and the key word there is together. Not separately, but the body needs to work together. I think that as your current board chair, after I participated in a conference and sat in on the relationship of board members and the district and superintendent, it is very critical and in the best interest of our students and our stakeholders for us to put any personal agendas to the side, professional agendas to the side, in the best interest of our, of our children. And so, I extend the invitation to spend more time with the board via on-the-phone web conferences to strengthen my relationship with each and every one of you, and I hope that through me demonstrating that, that it can become a two-way street. That's my comment in that area. All right, is there any more comments?
I just would ask that we be mindful, as far as leadership and board, that we treat each other equally, and not to treat one no different than the other. Somebody made a statement before, why does the unjust have to suffer with the just? But at the end of the day, why does anyone have to suffer for anything? So, I'm asking that as leadership, as board members, as students or whatever that's in around in our HM1, C1 family, that we treat each other equally and get to know the person before you make that judgment too, you know? Come to a person. That's my spin.
All right. Moving on to board governance, policy, and ethics.
So, what I've done is I, as, although I chair the committee for, the policies committee, I am just going to offer recommendations for policies for us to review, and I'm glad that we were able to kind of go through, assuming, knowing that the board and superintendent working agreement was going to be on the agenda, because I want to make sure that we, that board members review policy BBF, which is board member, board, school board member ethics, BCB, board officers, and BBA, which is school board powers and duties. I would ask that everyone, before we go through the second reading, that we are, or the third reading, that we compare, that the board takes a, has the ability to know these policies to be able to reference them to the working agreement. Again, I'm, I will send emails of these policies. Oh, and lastly, I'm sorry, lastly, to review the harassment and bullying policy as far as the definitions enclosed, which is also located just on the website. That's it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to renaming of Smith Hale.
That came out of the facilities committee. I've spoken to a lot of the, well, no, let me back up, because I didn't speak, they came to me. We have some Hickman Mill graduates that are also teachers in our community, and I've also spoken to some of the Hickman Mills alumni. And one of the questions that came up since I was there is, we don't have, we lost our school name a long time ago, and they moved Smith Hale into... And they moved Smith Hale into Hickman and renamed it again, over again and again. So my thing is to ask tonight if we would do the policy for renaming the school, Smith Hale, back to Hickman, so that therefore we can have a Hickman in our school district. We don't have, we have two Smith Hales, we got two Burks, and I mean, you know, that just, everybody at the time stated that nobody would go to the old Smith Hale, but they still do go to the old Smith Hale. And regardless of what we say. So I'm just asking that, you know, from the colleagues, if we can, and I would be glad to chair that, getting the people together, and also to rename it. And I can get the Hickman graduates in here if I need to, and get the alumnus in here, if that's something that needs to be done.
All right, moving on to Board Committee reports.
Is there a Board action?
Yeah, we have to take an action. I'm asking for an action.
Change the name for Smith Hale?
I think that's something that, at this time, Vice President Reagan, that we need to vet through a survey.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the policy was, state for us to do if that was to go in action, President.
I think that we probably need some further discussion, 'cause I have very limited knowledge on that.
Okay, I'll get you the, I'll get you the policies.
So Board Committee reports, education accountability.
Yes, I stated earlier, we have, right now, we're focusing on the district code of conduct. So Dr. Skinner and Ms. Franklin have a task force, and they're, again, fact-finding and putting that together now. And we will review that at next month's meeting. And there'll be some other items, kind of, we're in discussion with the committee, but those are, that's kind of where we're focusing right now. That's the only update for today.
Facilities Committee.
Yes, we had some things that are, we discussed about Ruskin. And I'm just gonna ask Mr. Weekly, did we get some of those things done? 'Cause we set some timelines on things. And some of those things I haven't heard about since today is Thursday. And I just wanna check on mainly the doors that were supposed to be done last week, but you said sometime the first of the week. And they're gonna be done tomorrow. Okay, so we kind of, basically, he also, the Ruskin Theater, it was, he did, he did everything for that. So basically, everything in there, he's, we got a, we have a timeline, and we're gonna be looking at it. So I just wanna make just one quick statement. I think maybe in our committees, President, we might try to put some timelines on things. That would help us out tremendously with getting things done and moving forward with the Board. We spent a lot of time on these things, as you stated, because we haven't set a timeline as a Board. And I think that would be a very important piece to our committees, to set timelines. Therefore, that puts the responsibility back on the leadership to get that done. And asking them in a fairly, because they're gonna respond on what they think. Now, we understand something might come up, then they should be communicating with us so that therefore that timeline is not being done. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Finance.
Madam President, Board members, we don't have anything pending, unless Mr. Weekly has something. Thank you so very much. So we have nothing pending.
Policy.
So we don't have anything pending. We did not meet this month. The one thing I'm needing to do is draft a memo to, for the dis, for the attorney to approve the recommended amendment to KK, Policy KK for Superintendent to review and to bring back to the Board for discussion.
So that means we need to have a policy meeting.
Yes.
We need to have a meeting so that we can work on whatever that revision is as a, as a group of people. All right, so let's have that meeting on November fifth.
I have an update, or just a response.
Okay.
So President Briggs, you asked for the total number of the students who are enrolled in the dual credit and advanced placement courses. And so the percentages that I provided earlier in the meeting were the percentage of students who earned a B or higher. And so those totals I've now sent to the entire Board, but wanted to share tonight. During the seventeen eighteen school year, there were four hundred and ninety-two students enrolled in the advanced placement and dual credit courses. During the eighteen nineteen school year, there were four hundred and ninety-five, so an increase of three from the seventeen eighteen school year to eighteen nineteen. And this current year, an increase of sixty-three students, so a total of five hundred and fifty-eight students enrolled in our advanced placement and dual credit courses. Thank you to Ms. Rowe for sending that information to me.
Informational items and future agenda items, November the fifth, two thousand nineteen, is a policy meeting at five thirty. November the eleventh is Education Accountability Committee meeting at five. November twelfth is finance at five thirty. November fourteenth is regular session Board meeting. And before we adjourn this meeting, hold on one second. I would, I know that we didn't, we need, I would entertain a motion to complete the items, the item that we were discussing in closed session before this meeting, that's adjourned.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we, after we adjourn this meeting, we go back into closed session. Closed session and discussion.
Second.
Stand on this, opposition, Ms. Peyton. We didn't send that statue. I don't have the closed session statue.
I think it's four point something. Two point something or something, something.
Six point one, point zero two one, three, as well, thirteen and nineteen.
Reva's Missouri statue.
So I need to restate the motion then. Let me restate it. I'm gonna restate the motion.
And it's subsection three that you're using.
Yes, ma'am, subsection three. Okay, so Madam President, I'll make a motion that we go back into closed session. Six point one, zero point zero two one, one, two, three, twelve, thirteen, and nineteen of RSMO Missouri, dealing with item number three. It was three or five?
No, it's RSMO.
RSMO. Six. Yeah, I did that part. Yes, ma'am, I did that part.
Okay, six, ten, oh, two, one, three.
Three, six, six, ten, oh, two, one, three.
Second.
Ms. Peyton. Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry. President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.